Oh, the microphone still works. Like, the wire is clearly mashed, but it still works. Is that anyone from the table speaking?
...........................
Recording in progress. Recording in progress.
...............
...........................
Now, we're going to call to order the regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting agenda on December 8th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. The public may attend this meeting in person at the Pinol City Council chambers at 2131 Pear Street or attend via Zoom teleconference. The public may also submit public comment in person by submitting a yellow public comment card and giving it to city staff here in the council chambers. Or via Zoom, the public may submit a live remote public comment using the Zoom function. You can download the app or play it on your computer and you can test it before joining the meeting. And the webinar ID is 86505375301. The public may also join via phone at by dialing 1669-900-6833, or 1253-215-8782, or 1346-248-7799. Speakers will ask if they provide their name and city of residence, although providing this is not required for participation. Each speaker, each sorry, each speaker will be afforded up to five minutes to speak. Speakers will be muted until their opportunity to provide their comment. When the chair opens the comment period for the item you wish to speak, please use the raise hand feature or press star nine if connecting via telephone, which will alert city staff that you would like to comment on this item and then plus and then press star six to unmute. To comment with your video enabled, please let city staff know that you would like to turn on your camera. And city staff will be able to help facilitate that for you. Written comments may also be submitted to the planning staff before the meeting via email at D H A N H A M at pinol.gov. Please include your full name, city of residence, and the agenda item that you are commenting commenting on. Other ways to watch this meeting are live on channel 26. They are recast the following week. Pinol Community TV Channel 26 schedule is published on the city's website. And this is, this meeting is also live stream on the city's website as well and will remain archived for five years. If these options aren't available to you, or if you need any assistance, please contact planning manager David Hannam at 510-724-8912, or at davidhannam@pinol.gov. Americans with Disabilities Act, in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990, if you need special assistance to participate in a city meeting, or if you need a copy of the agenda or the agenda packet in an appropriate alternative format, please contact the planning manager or the city clerk's office at 510-724-8928. Notification of at least 48 hours prior to the meeting or time or when services are needed will assist city staff in ensuring reasonable arrangements can be made to provide accessibility to the meeting or service. Please note staff reports are available for inspection at the city's website, www.pinol.gov. And we also contact the city clerk at email at H B E L L at pinol.gov. Any person wishing to speak on an item listed on the agenda may do so when the chair asks for comments in favor or in opposition to the item under consideration. After all, those persons wishing to speak have done so, the hearing will be closed and the matter will be discussed amongst the commission prior to rendering a decision. Any person may appeal the action of the planning commissioner or the planning manager by filing an appeal with the city clerk in writing within 10 days of such action. Upon the public hearing, the city council may act to confirm, modify, or reverse the action of the planning commissioner. The planning commission and the planning commission may act to confirm, modify, or reverse the action of the planning manager. Cost to appeal decision is $500 with a minimum of $2,500 deposit fee. Please note, if you challenge the decision of the commission regarding a project in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in writing delivered to the city at Pinol or prior to the public hearing. Ralph M. Brownack, Government Code subsection 54950. In enacting this chapter, the legislature finds and declares that the public commissions, board, and councils and other public agencies in this state exist to aid in the conduct of the people's business. It is the intent of the law that their actions be taken openly and that their deliberations be conducted openly. The people of the state do not yield their sovereignty to the agencies which serve them. The people in delegating authority do not give their public servants the right to know what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know. The people insist on remaining informed so they may retain control over the instruments they have created. And with that, we will be calling this meeting to order. And now we will be, those would like, those willing and able to, to do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin this meeting, we'd like to acknowledge the Aloney people who are the traditional custodians of this land. We pay our respects to the Aloney elders, past and present and future, who call this place Aloney Land, the land that Pinol sits upon, their home. We are proud to continue their tradition of coming together and growing as a community. We thank the Aloney community for their stewardship and support. Look forward to strengthening our ties as we continue our relationship of mutual respect and understanding. And with that, we have our next item, which is the Parklets and Outdoor Dining Workshop. And I will pass it over to planning manager Hannam.
Point of inquiry, Chair, before we begin, if we may, can we do the workshop before we do our roll call?
Yep.
Yes, I confirm with the planning manager, we're kind of doing this before our roll.
Yeah, okay, this is on good. In most cases, we, next time, we're probably going to have the workshop even before the meeting. So we'll start the workshop at 7:00 PM. I just wasn't sure how we were going to do that with this one the first time. So in the future, we will be having our workshops even before the meeting starts. So the workshops will start at seven. So we'll just go ahead, we'll go ahead and get started. If we could have the, oh, there, there we go. Outdoor dining parklets in Pinol. If we go to the next slide, please. Uh, next slide, there we go, here we go. All right, so basically, just kind of want to give you a background of what, what's been happening with our outdoor dining and uh, parklet statutes for the city of Pinol. Uh, in 2010, when we adopted the um, general plan and specific plan, there was an outdoor dining requirement added as part of our zoning code uh, to allow for businesses to do outdoor dining. Before then, um, there wasn't really any um, policies or guidelines to, to um, policy guidelines that regulated outdoor dining uh, in the city of Pinol. But with the establishment of some of the shopping centers and some of the businesses, uh, that was one of the things that was added. It was part of the, with the onset of COVID-19, uh, the city staff directed staff through an emergency ordinance to authorize uh, temporary use permits for outdoor dining and, and parklets. So as you are, as you are well aware, uh, it was meant for people needed to eat outside based on the distancing and everything during the COVID requirements. And so we had that probably for about two years. Uh, we had 10 temporary use permits that were issued for outdoor dining. Uh, nine of them were within existing parking lots of businesses. And the other one was actually a parklet on the street right outside City Hall at Sue's or right at Sue's Restaurant. Uh, currently, uh, there were, uh, well, currently, there were three active temporary use permits for outdoor dining. They, two of them were existing at the time when I did this uh, PowerPoint originally. Uh, we had, we still had some temporary use permits for outdoor dining areas due to the fact that some of them wanted to keep them uh, while we were going through the process of adopting guidelines. However, over the course of time, all three of those have, have gone away. Either they've taken them away or we've asked them to move, move them out. The, the temporary ordinance uh, expired and it was never renewed. Go to the next slide, please. So what are the purposes of, of the outdoor dining and parklet areas? One is to develop policies to develop public, private, public and private projects, high priority, given to creating comfortable, enjoyable, aesthetically pleasing public spaces. And basically, the purpose of the guidelines is to basically help clarify, provide standards, uh, make sure that pedestrian experience in the downtown is, is reinforced. And, and it has a sense of place of economic vitality. So basically allowing businesses, or mostly restaurants in this case, is um, to establish outdoor dining for additional capacity for the restaurants, as well as just creating another ambiance or another availability for that. Uh, these goals are consistent with those vision of the three corridor specific plan. Uh, compliance with all applicable sections of the guidelines is required at all times regarding insurance clearance, requirements, drainage requirements, et cetera. There are, there are a lot of goals regarding the specific plan in terms of outdoor dining. However, there's really no policy framework to really enforce it uh, or to regulate it. It talks about it as part of being the goal of the city or, you know, maybe some policies, but it doesn't have the, the, what, what, the, the guidance of the regulatory process to be able to govern it uh, at this point. Uh, what we do have, if you go to the next slide, please. Yeah, woo, yeah, there it goes, woo. There, there is our current standard of what we use for all outdoor dining purposes, basically section 17.59 of the code, or point 0260, which is an administrative use permit. So right now, currently, if somebody wanted to do an outdoor dining process, they would need to get an administrative, administrative use permit. They would not be allowed to be, do parklets like on the side of the, side of the street because there is no, there are no guidelines for those types of developments uh, on a, on a permanent basis. So we wouldn't allow those. But if you were to have a parking lot, uh, and I, and I use always like Tina's, Tina's or Antlers, for example, uh, they use part, a portion of their parking lot to do that, they could, they could apply for an administrative use permit for that process. Um, but other than that, that's really the only, um, the only thing we have on there. Uh, no really design guidelines, no really, you know, does it require to um, you know, have, you know, encroachment permits and all those types of things? No, this is, this is the process we use to define our outdoor dining regulations. Go to the next slide, please. Oh, wait, actually, go back to, I'm sorry, Dave, go back to, you guys have any questions so far? Anybody have any questions so far? I'll be able to answer some of those if you, if you need, or I'll just keep going, kind of stop. Rafael.
Sure, one question. So the sort of outdoor dining space in front of Pete's over at Trader Joe's Shopping Mall, I think it's Pinol Vista 1, I'm not sure of the proper name for that site.
Yeah.
Does that fall under this permitting or is it a prior non-conforming use, basically?
Uh, they were, they were permitted use when they got originally approved. Wait, which space, one over by Pete's Coffee?
Yeah.
By Trader Joe's?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, though, the ones in the shopping center, because there's also one at the uh, Fitzgerald and the, in the Target Shopping Center where there are some tables, outdoor tables and chairs. Uh, those were all included as part of those design reviews as part of the process when they were developed. Um, the, uh, the, the little chairs on where Tina's is, Bearclaw and the, the Mexican restaurant, those were all prior, came up prior to 2010. So um, if it wasn't Tina's, there was another restaurant that was there from my understanding. I don't know if that's, that's just what I, my understanding, Bearclaw. Um, however, once these policies and guidelines are in place, we'll be looking at those to make sure they meet the standard and guidelines that we have, that we put in place. Um, okay, next slide, Dave. That answer your question, hopefully, or to?
I guess sort of a follow-up question to that, if like, say, the new hot chicken place wants to have tables outside as part of its renovation of that site, would they need to go through this process? Or would it be counted as part of the initial site process?
No, they would have to go through a full, I mean, if they wanted to do a new, if they wanted to add that, they would have to go through our administrative use process right now, what we currently have. Um, and hopefully, we can get our guidelines here set up in the next few months uh, to get it to, so that then they would go through that process um, as well. All right.
I have a little bit of, of a clarifying, clarifying question. So the, the outdoor space that we're kind of looking for, that we're kind of reviewing tonight, that's kind of more of like stuff that would be on the street, kind of like what we saw in?
It's actually kind of both in a way, because, and I mean, we don't have the guidelines in front of you yet. So we're just kind of looking for, for information, we're looking for as part of the public workshop input. Uh, but most of it is basically threefold. The one is the, definitely the parklet, the, the on-street type of, in-the-ride-away type of, type of, type of use. So the second one is actually on private property and we'll, and there are examples and we'll get to those as part of the slide slope goes in. And then, of course, on private property and, and parking lots, similar to what we have had during the pandemic type, type of use. So if we go to the slides, next slide show, Dave, next slide, please. Okay, so basically, our topics of discussion right now is that we're defining our, our categories of outdoor dining on sidewalks, sidewalk dining area and parking spaces in the rideaway or public property. Uh, we want to establish a permitting process for outdoor dining, including opportunities for public input, annual reviews or inspections, uh, one-time or annual fees, maintenance and liability. And we want to be able to use the three corridor specific plan and zoning ordinance to describe the locations where different categories of outdoor dining area are allowed through the permitting process. So that's kind of the main goals and it's kind of the topic of discussion that we're going to carry on through. Go to the next slide, please. So we also, we'll be looking at establishing the size, sizes and designs of materials, whether they're heavy, high, hard, or heavy or light. Um, we'll be established, trying to establish standards as part of the new policy that address the use of facilities, uh, i.e. hours, public access, equity. Uh, also consider encouraging other elements such as public art and bicycle parking. And we can show you an idea of what that looks like. We found a, a parklet that has that kind of, that kind of array. Um, and also address the transition from the temporary outdoor dining area to the permanent, which we've already kind of addressed because we've basically taken away the, the temporary ones. And the ordinance has, has been eliminated, at least at this point. But if it does come into place at another time, we will have, we will also be able to transition that from a, uh, from a temporary to outdoor to permanent. If you go to the next slide, please. So just kind of looking at what, 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 what these, what these spaces are. You know, when we talk about outdoor dining, sidewalk dining areas, parklets, what, what are we talking about? So when you talk about the sidewalk dining areas, these are just located on public and private sidewalks. Uh, currently, what we kind of have on the, by Tina is kind of what we have by the, that's what we would consider kind of, they're located on the public-private sidewalks. Um, the private outdoor dining areas, uh, these areas are located mostly on private property that serve a restaurant or cafe. Uh, they may be incorporated with, in, into lots or outdoor patios, recessed entries. Um, immediately adjacent to the public rideaway or in alleys that, uh, joining, adjacent to operating business, i.e. uh, East Bay Coffee, right? Their outdoor area is right next door, it's on private property, it's additional there. Um, the, uh, on some of the temporaries, Tina's had hers in the back of her property that were located within the parking lot of the, of the building. Uh, so that's kind of the private outdoor dining area or areas where it's like served right behind the business. And again, we'll kind of show you some examples of what we're looking at there. And of course, parklets. And parklets are, parklets are kind of a, I wouldn't say a new phenomenon, but they're probably within the last 15 years, 20 years, where they are typically on the curbsides of streets, uh, basically extending, extending the sidewalk per se, the width of the sidewalk. Uh, they're converted to public seating platforms. Uh, most of the time, or some of the time, they're, they intend to provide amenities or green space or recreational areas to the public. Um, basically, the purpose of parklets is to maximize the sense of community by using public spaces for aesthetics amenities, uh, to create features of interest or opportunities for just informal gathering. Um, so if we go to the next slide, please. So there's your sidewalk dining area. So that's kind of an example of sidewalk, what we would consider sidewalk dining. As you can see, it's pretty, pretty right up against the building. It, uh, it's pretty tight. I mean, there needs to be at least three feet for, uh, for people to be able to get through. So that's, that's more of kind of what we have here currently. Most of our stuff is pushed up against the building. You go to the next slide. There's another example of sidewalk dining. So it's all within the sidewalk area per se. So what we would do, uh, in most cases, would we be able to provide a pathway through? And if they're, depending on what area we are in and what the business proposes. And so it would kind of be similar to something like that. If you go to the next slide, please. And this is kind of your private outdoor dining space that we talked about. As you can see, that's the existing restaurant, the tables and chairs are on the outside, just adjacent to the restaurant. Adjacent to the restaurant, kind of an existing patio. Uh that would kind of be similar to, similar to East Bay Coffee. Um Deosa, Deosa Restaurant where the bank is, it has Dallas or dining on the, on the one side. Uh kind of private in that area as well. Uh go to the next slide. Another, this is another example of in the parking lots. And that's kind of a, that's kind of what we did for Antlers and what we did for Mills, what we did for uh Tina's. Uh that's just in the back of the parking lot. The difference between then and now would be now we would have regulations to be able to govern this. Or really put designs, design standards in place that would allow for this, allow this to happen. Where before it was just kind of a. Here, here you go, here's some tables and chairs so that people can sit outside and, and that. So this would be a more organized, a more um, more regulated type process. You go to the next slide, please. And of course, parklets, right? It's basically an extension of the sidewalk. So it has, and curves out into the. Out into the uh right-of-way uh platforms with said, this one you can see has got room for drainage underneath. Um but it ha- it's basically an extension, kind of an extension of the sidewalk. If you go to the next slide, please. Another example of a parklet, again, you can kind of see the little ramp into the, out into the, into the street area uh or the parking area. They use landscape barriers and some landscaping and some pergola type thing over, overheads to kind of address it. So. Uh but again, it's again, an extension of the sidewalk. And that's more, as you can see, that's kind of more of a gathering place and an eating place. And they've got little tables, but mostly they have the benches and that. So again, it can be used for either, either dining or for just gather, people gathering. If you go to the next slide, please. So these are the type of processes that in terms of establishing the process for outdoor dining, I mean, it's. There's pretty much a few, number of different ways that you can, that we can take a look at in terms of administering this. Um right now, from an administrative standpoint, process, we can look at a new outdoor dining permit. Uh either approved by the planning manager slash community development director. Uh we could do a hearing process similar to kind of more of what I would call more of an administrative, which is an administrative use permit. Or a conditional use permit or a zoning administrator permit. That's the Z A, the zoning administrator. Uh with a new outdoor dining permit uh through either the zoning administrator uh with an appeal right to the planning commission. We have that already in our zone. We have a zoning administrator type role in our, defined in our code, so we could use that process. It's similar to a public hearing process, but it's more administrative in nature. Uh and then, of course, a full hearing process. Um regarding the same type of permits, either administrative use, conditional use. Uh through the planning commission with an appeal to the city council. So meaning that you get to decide who and what is allowed to do as part of the um permit processing. Or just a hearing process that goes straight, uh straight to the council with a recommendation to the planning commission. So the city council then would have the final approval. Of what um, what we would want in terms of administrative, what we type of approval process. We'd want to be able to process as outdoor dining slash parklet permit. So we're looking for a little bit of, if you guys have any comments on that, what you think would be, would be a, a role on that. And that's something that we would include as part of the regulatory process in the guidelines, so that people would know. And are, we are updating. We're actually adding a code section for outdoor dining and parklets, similar to what we've done for alcohol sales and outdoor use and. Taking it out of that little entitlement area where it was and creating its own, its own section. So and that would define the hearing process of what, what we think would be the best, um best for that. For that, for that procedure. Any questions so far? Any questions from anybody? Any statements, any, anything? Good, okay. Moving on. Do we go to the next slide, please? So basically using our, using our corridor, uh what we've done is we've been taking some. We're taking a look at the, the, the three corridor specific plan, the zoning ordinance to describe different locations. We're looking at different process, using the GIS outlining specific areas of the city, so you'll see some maps of different areas. Uh using the commercial mixed-use zonings in the specific plan or all the mixed-use zonings in the specific plan. Uh for different styles of outdoor dining, maybe sidewalk dining, private outdoor, belonging residential mixed-use or whether. You know, you want to see parklets and CMUs. Uh so, so similar to what your use table looks like as part of the. The, uh the specific plan, that's, we would put outdoor dining as a permitted or conditional or whatever use within those zone districts. And of course, we would use the regional commercial areas that are not within the specific plan area. So. And there's really, because there are no, as we discovered, there are no commercial zonings outside of the regional commercial that's outside the three corridor specific plan. So that would be the major area that we would take a look at for that. Next slide, please. Okay, so, so this is what we're trying to do is establish boundaries or not boundaries, barriers. Uh for, for, for these parklets for outdoor dining. Uh there's a number of different things that, you know. You're going to need, because you're going to need, if you're doing parklets in the, in the public right-of-way, you're going to need protection of the patrons who are using that. So we looked at some heavyweight barrier styles that were probably the most common uh used in those. Um and again, most of those heavyweight barriers are able to hold or two hundred and fifty pounds or more to, to move. So these are big. Uh solid type of, of treatment that would help protect. And of course, then we have the lightweight barriers. Which might only be needed in parking lots or some of the, maybe some of the, just the sidewalk areas. Uh or as well as using it in like the, like the, what I would call the, what the vertical, oh yeah, the vertical. Uh side of a, of a street where the big barriers are the perpendicular. The perpendicular uh direction for the, for the big heavyweight and then the, the. Can't think, the parallel to the street would be the, the light, lighter weight barriers. If you go to the next slide, please. So again, we're looking for um, looking for different designs and materials, landscaping, accessibilities. Uh lighting, safety features, guardrails, stops, visible vertical elements. I mean, all of these will be included as part of the guidelines when we, when we put them, we are, we're pretty close of getting them putting together. Uh however, we are again, looking for input from everybody to see what are these things that we, that you would like to see as part of the guidelines. Any questions so far? Looking good? All right. We'll go to the next slide, please. So this is the, this is the bike parking thing. Okay, so this is the, this is what we found. I forget where we found this, this actual parklet. But as you can see, what they did was is they extended the parklet down, basically the parking area and just included a separate area for bike parking. So it's all just painted. Uh they do have, it looks like they do have a, a bike, bike racks in there. So the bikes can just be parked next to the parklet per se. As you can see, the parklet out in the wireway, so they just extended. Uh and that's probably where a bulb out into an intersection is what I'm thinking of, where that, that kind of. Um and I'll just come over here. This is probably, hopefully you can still hear me. But basically, this is probably the bulb out to the intersection of the crosswalk right here, because you can kind of see how it's kind of moving up into the street. So they just created a, they could just create a bicycle parking area right there that you could use in downtown or other. And that you can use um, that you could use uh for other things besides just pavement. If you go to the slide, Dave. So, no, go back, go back. Thank you. So um, so, so it's again, it gives you another, it gives you another. Uh look at what you could do as part of the, as part of the um landscape for uh your parklets design. Okay, go to the next slide, please. And again, these are kind of um, they're kind of what we're looking at is in terms of how we would address some of the temporary areas. Or the existing areas. Um we would set some timetables converting from temporary program to new program. Uh we would work with existing businesses to address new design programs. Uh institute a potential fee deferral program for compliance. So we take a look at, so the areas that have existing. Outdoor dining and make sure that they uh comply with the new standards as well as create a, a full amnesty program for existing businesses. Who want to have an outdoor dining area. So those people that have the areas out there, we will go out and take a look to see if they meet the guidelines. Give them kind of like a grandfather time institute, you know, maybe a fee deferral to get them to comply with the new program. So that everybody starts out with the same, under the same regulation. Yes, sir.
So question, I know that sometimes we, but we've been setting up things like conditional use permits. We haven't been able to apply. Basically certain standards to already existing uses because their conditional use permits were set up already.
Right.
So how does this differ? How are we able to, you know?
Well, well, well staffer is going to have to do research and go back to see who actually has an administrative use permit or a conditional use permit and who doesn't. Um we, again, we've gone under the assumption that the existing ones have been here prior to two thousand ten, because that's when the majority of the. Um the only ones that have gone through the prod- conditional use process right now is. Uh East Bay Coffee, they went through a conditional use pro- process for their outdoor dining. Uh Deosa Restaurant went through to enhance, to be able to use their outdoor dining for both sides of the building. Uh those are existing, they're already built. I mean, they're, well, East Bay Coffee isn't built, but Deosis is already built out in terms of how the bank was. Because uh I think prior to two thousand ten, there was some stuff there that, that, then they added that as part of the building. Um and so, but the other ones like the, the restaurant and the, and Tina's and Bearclaw out there, I don't know if they have them. We're assuming they do, but we'll go back through the process and find out if they did. And if they didn't, then we'll work with them to design a new program that would help. Would help uh with the program, get them to, to match the program. Um the shopping centers and the shopping centers have all, those have all been part of design review processes. When you go out there, you can see that mo- they've been designed to accommodate for ADA accesses. They were built fairly recent. Say fairly recent, within the timeframe of ADA. Um and so uh again, but we will be going through to make sure. That they've got their proper permitting uh and go through and get, and get those, get those organized. So that's, so that's going to be a goal of staff once we approve the guidelines. Is that the, go to the next slide, Dave? Was that the last one? I know it's the last one yet. Okay, we're talking about parklets. So what are parklets, right? They establish, uh if you go back to the past slide, what was the first slide? Okay, yeah, just parklets. And that, again, that's just another example of a parklet. Uh in another city, again, a cen- extension of the sidewalk be used primarily for, for dining. Okay, go to the next slide. So again, you know, we established the standards, the, the, the guidelines will establish the standards, designs, materials. Uh the lighting, safety features, guardrails, wheel stops, uh all the drainage requirements that'll have to be involved in that. Um and so we'll go through that. If you go through the next slide. Um okay, so private outdoor dining areas. So these are just areas that are within private property that are within the business. They're not in the public right-of-way, they're all part of the company's business, but they're out, they're, they are outside of the restaurant proper, I'll say. Um we don't really have a lot of these out, uh that are out there yet. Um but we're working on those. And so that will be another thing that we will be um, be regulating as part of outdoor dining in that. So if you go to the next slide. Okay, and our sources, these are some of the sources that we stole from. Uh Contra Costa County, we stole some from San Mateo Parklet Program, City of Alameda and City of Walnut Creek. Um so we've been working, the, the ad hoc committee has been working over the last probably couple of years. And getting this policy, we're kind of write down, we're coming down to the last, last bits of it. Um and so that's why we're doing this public outreach now to see, you know, what type of um, if there are any other comments or anything that we need to add. Or anything we need to, you know, do to, to do this, to create the program. Mr. Menes.
So a couple of comments. First off, for the, just in terms of the presentation style and design. The bright green tag that's acting as like a bookmark level element in the presentations. Looks almost like a screener or something. You might want a slightly different shade of green.
Okay.
And secondly, on the final slide there, the one with all the hyperlinks, bright green on light is, on white is. Barely legible. I think you would definitely want to change the color there because that might be an accessibility issue.
No problem. Okay, thank you. We'll do that. Any other questions or any, anybody have any questions in the audience? Anybody have?
And is, does that conclude the presentation? Is this the part where we give you like our feedback?
Yeah, this is part where you give us all your feedback and yeah, and that's the end of the presentation. And so now we're looking for all your, your wonderful ideas and what you'd like to see as part of our guidelines, so.
Yeah, if we can, can go back to the commission. Commissioner Huey, do you have any feedback?
Yeah, thank you so much for this presentation. I'm glad to see that the city of Penole is working towards including more parklets. Um one thing that I hope to see in this is clear guidelines that protect our emergency access. Um to fire hydrants and making sure that our emergency vehicles can get through in an efficient manner. As well as making sure that the parklets have ADA mobility.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bender?
Um I actually liked the presentation that was done, what, two months ago?
Yeah. Yeah, about a month, yeah, two months ago.
About two months ago.
Yeah.
Um to me, it was a little more informative.
Okay.
Um even though it was uh. One other person and myself were the only ones in attendance.
Okay.
Commissioner H.
I'd like to say a very informative uh presentation. I, my, I guess a comment would be, I think for Penole. Since the majority of businesses besides this Old Town will most likely take advantage of the parking lots as an opportunity.
Mm-hmm.
Because most businesses that are going to do parklets, say traditionally on, adjacent on a street is mostly in Old Town.
Right.
So I'm, I'm guessing at least in Penole, it would be quite unique to see uh a lot of parking lots possibly seeing a lot of changes.
Potentially, yes.
Thank you.
And Vice Chairman S.
So I think I've given a lot of my feedback on the various elements in this presentation during my time. On the design review subcommittee, SF, Commissioners Bender and H, I'm sure. Overall, I think it's reasonably informative. I think like, as I mentioned, typ- typographically speaking, there's. One or two areas where you maybe want to adjust the text a bit because it goes off the screen, but I'm sure you saw that in the slides. Overall, it's pretty broadly informative. I think it might help for the pictures having a sort of caption like saying, you know. Where the picture was taken, if, if we have that data, just so people can, you know, cross compare or look it up, see what it looks like now, that sort of thing.
Um thank you. And thank you, Planning Manager Hannah, for the presentation. I guess this is my, my first time seeing it, so I do have quite a, quite a bit more. Uh I do have some thoughts about this. Um I think me personally, I think I probably would like to see a different. A different process for approving the parklets versus approving the outdoor dining.
Okay.
Um the, like the private outdoor dining um for the parklets or for both, or for all of them, maybe potentially seeing if it's seasonal. Um you know, I think this would be a great idea in the summer months or when it's much warmer outside and people want to be outside. Um but you know, I'd, I'd be a little bit worried about them being the parklets or any sort of dining being empty like right now when it's forty degrees outside. Um and also kind of some sort of like visual structure to it. Um so it's not just like a canopy tent. Having something that's a little bit more like visually pleasing mixtures of concrete and wood and some sort of. Visual like vertical design as well to it. Uh that was something I was thinking about. Um as for like how the process that has the reviewed. The sidewalk dining, I think that that could be, that should probably be an administrative review. I don't, I don't think that. That should be coming back to the planning commission, especially if it's something that's. Um if, if it's really just a checking to make sure that there, there's enough space for whether it's emergency vehicles or ADA. Um or whatever, whatever we need to, needs to get through that space. Me personally, I think that could be a, an, an administrative review.
Mm-hmm.
Um as for the other private outdoor, the, like a private outdoor dining, kind of like how we saw like. The kind of like more like a patio type dining. Um as well as the parklets, I think that that might be a good one to have a C U, to, for those to be a C U P. Um with the, with council having the ability to, to, gosh, what was the, what was the word? Council having the ability to, to review them or to appeal, appeal them, peel them, that's what I meant.
Okay.
Especially for the parklets, since that kind of like, that will be on the street.
Right.
Um I feel like a lot of people might get mad at us if we approve something that takes away some, some space on the street or parking on the street. And councils scratching their heads, being like, why are they doing this? We wanted to, we wanted to. They wanted to have the final decision on that, or at least the ability to appeal that.
Right.
Um also, as for like in terms of like zoning, I think that should be allowed in commercial zoning. Um like that should just be an allowed use in commercial zoning. And for residential, I would say that that could be allowed with the, with the, with the C U P. Um and then I kind of did have some questions about like, this was more for the parklets. Um I was kind of. I'm kind of like envisioning kind of stuff that like we kind of saw during like the pandemic. Um and would San Pablo, like would San Pablo Avenue be one of the areas that would use, have parklets? Um, and would San Pablo, like, would San Pablo Avenue be one of the areas that would use, have parklets? Or would that not be allowed since it's a main?
No, it'd be allowed. I mean, depending on how we, depending on how we, you know, structure that or however, what materials they use to be able to make it, make it safe, uh, for parks on San Pablo. Um, I know that there's been a lot of talk about, there's been a lot of talk about, uh, San Pablo and what it's gonna look like in the next, in the next years, um, through a lot of different programs. And so whether they do road diets through there or something of that nature, uh, or a free bus lane or however they address San Pablo, um, but we are gonna allow them on San Pablo, um, if the, if the businesses wanna, wanna do that. Um, but they'll have to go through that design process. There's also as part, and you'll see it when it come, when the full package comes to you as a commission, because we'll have the added, the, besides the guidelines, we'll also have the regulatory ordinance amendment to go with it. So there'll be some requirements as part of the ordinance that would allow, that would have like public works and liability contracts and all that kind of stuff that's, that would be allowed as part of the project. So tonight was more of just kind of, it lets you take a look at it, um, kind of, kind of thing and just, um, get some general thoughts so that we can, that we can probably include those and, and that. So there'll be a more, it'll be a more, especially with the parklets, it'd be a more robust, uh, process because due to the drainage in San Pablo and, and all the other, all the other stuff that would happen on the right of way.
Yeah, I, I do think for parklets on San Pablo, personally, I would want to see some sort of safety element tied to that, especially with all the cars, you know, don't want an accident to happen. Or if, if an accident had happened on the road and then the car just fears into a parklet.
Right.
Some sort of, something that would be able to.
Withstand.
Uh, withstand, but also look visually appealing, not just kind of like a Jersey barrier or something.
Right.
Um, and then kind of a follow-up question to that was if they do, if, or if we decide to do kind of like, allow these heavyweight type barriers, would these be permanent? Would they be temporary? Um, or would it be something that's, could be seasonal or? What, what would kind of, what could we require? Or what would be some potential uses?
Well, I think if, if there, I mean, a lot of, it's, it's funny because a lot of, a lot of events and a lot of things down, that could be coming downtown. Um, I think that we would be able to condition of what we need to have required as part of those, those barriers and those, and those requirements. Um, and, um, we repeat that one more time, just.
Yeah, it's like some of the, um, whether or not if a parklet gets approved and we're requiring heavyweight barriers, would these barriers be like permanent? Or would that be up to the commission or up to planning?
Uh, it'd probably be, it'd probably be a combination of what the, what the, what the applicant would want to propose in that area. So if they wanted to propose, I mean, most of them are quote, temporary in nature in that they can be removed. Um, so it won't be very easy for them to be removed if they're using the heavyweight barriers, but they could be, they, they could be removed. Um, so in that case, um, it would be whether or not that the applicant would want it from a seasonal basis or a, or a permanent basis on, or, or all year, instead of just seasonal. So, but that's something that would come before use or if that's part of the process that we use or part of the administrative review, depending on what, what we do as part of the process, so. Um, but yeah, that would just, we'd see what the applicant proposing, we'd see where it's located and then, and then move accordingly.
Yeah, Dan, thank you so much for the presentation. That's all my questions. Um, are there any other questions? Yes, Vice Chairman.
Yes, thank you, Chair Sandoval. You brought up a few questions I hadn't thought of previously. So with regards to your last comment, let's say something like the car show happens. Would parklets be required to move out of the way if any of them were permitted in a space that the car show typically occupies? Because the cars usually take up, you know, most of the street.
Not necessarily. I mean, the businesses would have the, the business, because the businesses have usually have paid a fee. They're paying, they're paying for the materials, they're paying for all that. They wouldn't have, they, they wouldn't be required to move them now. So there would have to be some, it would only be if they, i- if they wanted to move them to be accommodating for the car show or some other big event that would take up, but there would just have to be other places that would, that either the cars would have to go. Because normally those people that, that put that parklet up paid for all the materials, they paid for all the, the requirements to get there. And they, they would have the ability to have their, have the parklet there for, um, for them.
And then secondly, with regards to sort of the who decides question as to the level of permitting.
Mm-hmm.
I think that overall for, I agree with Chair Sandoval, that for private par- property parking lots and for parklets, that the level of approval should be the planning commission with right to appeal to the council because it's the sort of ditty gritty planning exercise that seems appropriate to the planning commission and doesn't seem like the council would want to deal with on a routine basis, but would want to intervene and if somebody cares enough to appeal it.
Okay.
With regards to the sidewalk dining areas, I think it should be one step higher. So rather than just zoning administrator with no right of appeal, it should be zoning administrator with right of appeal to the planning commission, just in case there's an issue somewhere and somebody wants to appeal that. Somebody misses something about the sidewalk and you're only permitting like a three foot wide area or whatever.
Okay, we can put that in. Did you get that, Justin? Okay, cool, thank you.
And that's just my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say I agree with, uh, Commissioner Menes on that last point. Um, you know, the existing sidewalk, uh, eating areas in front of the one, two.
Three.
Twice or three.
Yeah.
You know, I don't see any issues there.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't think it needs to go through, you know, to the planning commission.
Okay.
It should go through the zoning administrator, uh, planning manager. And if someone objects to it, they have their right to appeal.
Okay.
The others I do think need to go for a full-blown review because, um, not long ago, um, someone who runs a business here in town was very unhappy about another business taking over the parking spaces in their area that served their business for the outdoor dining during the COVID.
Mm-hmm.
And they were not happy about that at all.
Right.
Um, so I think that is, that necessitates it being a larger discussion when something like that takes place.
Okay.
And that is it.
Thank you, Commissioner Bender and Vice Chairman. Um, that actually brings up some other questions that I thought, thought of. Um, would, would these be, I'm assuming that there would be a fee atta- as attached with the, any of the, any of the options that, either whether it's a sidewalk, parklet, or?
Yes, there would be a fee.
And then how, how would that fee be determined? Is it like a flat rate fee? Is it yearly? Is it ongoing?
That's something that we would have to, once we, once we establish the policies, then we would be able to establish the fee of what, so we would, it would depend on what type of review level and we would put together a, a, a matrix of what our cost would be for that and then establish that fee. So similar to how we establish all our other use, our use fees.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Do we have any public comment on this item? Whether in person or online?
Uh, no comments online at this moment.
Sounds good. Thank you. Um, I guess that will conclude our parklet workshop.
Yeah, so.
Thank you, Planning Manager Hannah.
And if, uh, and if anybody has any questions or anything, they can call us at, uh, City Stat, they can call us at City Hall and if they have any questions, we can, we can get them the information they need, so just to let everybody know that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And with that, we move on to our next item, which is the roll call. So if we could please have a roll call. For the record.
All right, here we go. Okay, Commissioner Uch.
Present.
Commissioner Huey.
Present.
Commissioner Lam Julian, absent. Commissioner Martinez, absent. Commissioner Bender.
Present.
Chair, Vice Chairman.
Present. And I would note as the usual, a couple of interest note, I sent out an email to my email list talking about what we'll be discussing this evening.
Okay, Chair Sandoval.
Present.
At the record show that we have a quorum and that we can take actions on all the actionable items to, at tonight, in tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Planning Manager Hannah. And our next item is citizens to be heard. The public may address the planning commission on items that are within its jurisdiction and not otherwise listed on the agenda. Planning commissioners may discuss the matter brought to their attention, but by state law, the Brown Act, action must be deferred to a future meeting and time allowed is five minutes each. And it looks like we do have one public comment in person. Um, and if we have, if you can please come up to the podium, um, and if we have any public comment online, please make sure to raise your hand. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Anastasia Maynich. I'm Bayview, I live in the Bayview unincorporated area, uh, which is surrounded by the City of Pinole. So the city planning and preparedness directly affect my community as well. Um, as you continue shaping Pinole's long-term planning priorities, I wanted to raise perspective tied closely to safety and resilience of our entire area. Pinole sits directly on a Hayward fault, as we all know, one of the most dangerous and active faults in the coun- country. With recent increase in seismic activity across the region, a major earthquake would have far-reaching impacts, not just in terms of fire or police response, but in infrastructure damage, utility disruption, debris, communication challenges, and long-term recovery. As an experienced emergency manager and during my time serving Los Angeles County, uh, as a representative for January wildfire debris removal, I saw firsthand how complex disaster recovery truly is. Debris removal along becomes a month-long, highly coordinated effort involving public works, environmental health, utilities, county partners, and sometimes federal agencies. One factor I want to highlight, which directly touches planning and land use, is evacuation and access. Bayview, where I live, has only two exits, both of which route directly into Pinole. Any significant earthquake, wild, wildfire, smoke event, or infrastructure disruption will reserve in, will result, apologies, will result in immediate congestion. As Pinole continues to develop housing and add population, these bottlenecks become even more critical to consider. Evacuation routes, traffic flow, emergency access needs to be integrated into long-term planning decisions. Additionally, our area sits between two major rail lines, which carry, carry hazardous materials and heavy loads every day. In earthquake or derailment scenario, these rail lines can become blocked or damaged, cutting off movement, limiting emergency access, and further constraining evacuation routes. This makes coordinated emergency planning even more critical for both Pinole and the surrounding unincorporated areas. Cities that did not have a designated emergency manager or emergency management function struggles with the most during disasters, not because they were committed, but because no one was responsible for maintaining plans, coordinating operations, or guiding recovery. Pinole does have an emergency operation plan, which will be approved, uh, I believe next January, uh, next year, in January, but plan on paper is not the same as the person or readiness. Um, it requires active stewardship, updating, exercising, and integrating it into everyday planning, including development decisions, road capacity, land use, and hazard mitigation. I want to be clear, I'm not criticizing the city. I love the City of Pinole. I used to own a condo down the street. And I'm bringing this up because our entire region, including unincorporated neighborhoods like mine, depends on Pinole's planning, communication, and resilience. As the city grows and modernizes its infrastructure, having real emergency management capacity built into planning will make an enormous difference when disaster occurs. Emergency management was built on three pillars, preparedness, response, and recovery. Many cities begin this process by bringing in outside emergency management consultants to evaluate their existing plans, identify gaps, recommend it, and appropriate level staffing or structure. It's cost-effective, first step that allows a city to understand its needs before committing long-term resources. As you update the general plan and safety element, I encourage you to consider importance of designated emergency management function as a part of Pinon, Pinole's long-range resilient strategy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have any other public comments online?
Uh, no other public comments online at this time.
Thank you. Um, and Planning Manager Hannah did have a clarifying question in response to the public comment. The planning commission, we did approve our safety plan. Was that also approved by council or is there?
No, that would be going, the safety element and environmental justice element will be going to the council in January, uh, as well. Um, but we have our cards, we'll make sure that, um, is your address and phone and is there an email on that card? I can't, or just? Is there? Okay, good. Then what we'll do is we'll add that to our, we'll add that to our contacts list. And so that, so that this, this young lady will, we'll have a, uh, we'll have a, um, uh, she'll get, she'll get a notice when it goes to council, so she'll be able to take a review. The safety element is online, so if you want to take a look at it right now, um, if you want to take a look at it online, it's there. So you can take a look at the evacuation routes and what's been approved by the planning commission and recommended to the city council. Um, and then if you have any questions, you can refer them to me, uh, to the planning manager. Uh, and we can, we still have our housing consultant, at least for another month, until we, until we get to the council. So we'll be able, we could adjust depending on what we need to do at that point, so.
Thank you, uh, Planning Manager Hannah. And I'd also encourage reaching out to the staff working on the, when the, when the item will come to the city council. Um, they will still have the ability to update or change or modify as needed. Yes, Vice Chairman.
So two points. First off, I'd like to go over, uh, Planning Manager Hannah's email again because I think there was a minor error when that was printed out originally earlier on the meeting. It's D H A N H A M at pinole.gov. So the first name is just abbreviated as a single letter. And secondly, it seemed like a lot of your comment was from a pre-written thing. So if you could send in the portions of your comment that are pre-written as a written comment to the staff members slash the public comment line for a given meeting, that way it can be printed out and available to everybody to access as part of the record of the meeting. Uh, our transcriber does a pretty good job of noting down what people say in the minutes, but having a direct written copy makes life easier for everybody and allows for response before the meeting. And I know that I've certainly been told that plenty of times when I make comments at council meetings, now it's my turn to make that comment.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. And with that, no other comments online, correct? And we will move on to our next item, which are our meeting minutes um, for the planning commission meeting on October twenty seventh. Do any of the commissioners have any edits that they would like to make? With that, I would like to make a motion approving the planning commission meeting, meeting minutes for October twenty seventh, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Bender and Planning Manager Hannah. If we could please have a roll call.
Commissioner Uch.
Yes.
Commissioner Huey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bender.
Yes.
Vice Chairman.
Yes.
Chair Sandoval.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. And the next item is our public hearings. We do not have any public hearings at this time. There is one item that is listed on the agenda, but this will be continued to our January twenty twenty-six, January twenty-six, twenty twenty-six meeting. And we do not have any older business. And that moves on to item J, our new business, which are the planning commission regular meeting schedule for twenty twenty-six. Are there any questions on, questions for staff on that item? Any questions?
Just doing a quick review of calendar to see if there's any obvious conflicts like there were last year. I know some, that, one of ours had an overlap with Valentine's Day. I think there was an issue some commissioners had with that. Let's see.
No, I mean, the, the really, the only change from last year's schedule is that we added a meeting in November. So, um, where this year, we only had a meeting, one in October, one in November, one in December. We added, we added one in, uh, November just because depending on what items come in, we wanted to have that extra, just to be able to, instead of having to call a special meeting. And that's before the Christmas holiday, so, and it's the week, usually the week, that looks like the week before. I don't know if that's the week before Thanksgiving on this next year, but.
Yeah, that's the Monday before Thanksgiving.
Yeah, the Monday before Thanksgiving. So it's, you know, if we were meeting on Tuesday, I'd probably not put it there. But since we're meeting on a Monday, um, we wanted to keep it, we wanted to keep it in there just to make sure, in case we had, because this meeting going through this year was kind of tough on items that we had, we had to automatically push. So if we didn't have a, you know, we didn't have that second meeting in November, it automatically got pushed to December and automatically got pushed. So we, we tried to just add one more meeting in that area. Doesn't mean we'll have it, but at least we'll have it on the schedule so that people are aware. So just want to add that comment.
And, yes, Commissioner. And, yes, Commissioner Bender, you had a comment?
Oh, no.
Okay. With that, I will make a motion to adopt the regular planning commission meeting schedule for 2026.
I'll second that motion.
Planning Manager Hanam, if we could please have a roll call.
Sure. Commissioner Huey.
Yes.
Commissioner Uch.
Yes.
Commissioner Bender.
Yes.
Vice Chair Menes.
Yes.
Chair Sandoval.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. And then we will move on to the city planners slash commissioners' report. City, Plan Manager Hanam, do you have anything you'd like to report out?
I just have a couple of things. One is the Planning Commission Academy is coming up next, in, coming up. And so we like to get the early bird, it's probably, it's in March, but we try to like to get ahead of time on, let people know it's coming so we can make our reservations early because those hotels fill up quick. And usually right after the holiday, boy, they're, everyone's after it. So I just wanted to kind of get an idea of who would want to go to that. The academy is, let me get you some dates just so that you know. It's in Mar, March, I want to say.
It's like mid-March, right? Somewhere around there?
Usually it's, I can tell you in like two seconds, my computer will work.
I think it's March of November, December 13.
Is it this year?
Mm-hmm.
So I was able to.
Yes, Wednesday, March 11 through Friday, March 13. So it is in Anaheim this year, so down south. So usually when it's down south, there's a lot more members because all the, all the LA communities flock to it. So, so it'll be, it'll be pretty well-attended again. So any of those that would like to, like to go, if you could let me know before the end of the year, if you, if you want to go, then, and I think we have room again for three commissioners, I think three or four commissioners now, I think three, three commissioners and myself. And I think, Justin, I think you're eligible to go too, I think, this year. We'll see. So, yeah. So, so whoever wants to go would be happy to send some commissioners. So every year is different. So just, I mean, it's similar, but they're different. So if you've been before, that's okay.
Does anyone on the commission want to attend?
The thing for me is that I feel like I've already been attending a fair number of them recently, so it might be a broader benefit to the commission to have a fresher perspective attending these.
I'd be willing to go into Anaheim, right?
Yeah.
It's in Anaheim?
It's in Anaheim.
Got it.
Disneyland.
Go to Disneyland after.
All right, got you down.
I'd be interested as well.
Okay, good.
I think Commissioner Lam Julian might be interested. That could, I might round out a three, or Commissioner Martinez.
All right.
Save a spot for them.
All right. Well, I'll try and take us all. It's one thing, if we can get all the commissioners to go, that'd be great. But I mean, even if we get four or five of you guys down there, that'd be great too, because, you know, to spread out the sessions, you get more of the materials. It's just, it's better, it's a better experience. I think it's hard, it's hard to do when there's only one or two people down there, you know, because there's just so much going on. So it'd be good to get three, four, five, five of us down there. That'd be great. So I've got two for sure's, including you two for sure. You for sure, Andrew?
Yes.
All right, good.
Yes.
Okay, so, maybe? Okay. So you have until December 31 to figure out. So, yeah, by the next meeting, I'll definitely be making, I'll, I'll probably be sending out an email later in the year, later in the month to, to follow up, to make sure everybody, and then I'll just make reservations and stuff, get that, and get that started.
Sounds good. Thank you. Anything else you'd like to report out?
Yeah, we're looking, we're closing in on the parklets and the, and the objective development design standards. We're, they're just kind of giving an update where we're at. We're finishing up making all the changes. And they will go to our attorney and our upper executive staff to review and, and, and tear apart and take apart and, and then make, and then finish those comments and then hopefully give them back to you. I'm hoping, back to the commission at the second meeting in January, but it probably looks more like the first week, first meeting of February. But try and get that back to you guys for that. So that's the goal, to get those to you, get those approved. And then of course you have the housing element coming, oh no, you don't, you already approved the housing element. So we've got that all done. Other than that, Justin, you have anything or?
Just wanted to note early that the gas station moratorium is about to expire, so we are working on an ordinance potentially to bring to the planning commission for a recommendation and then city council for consideration. So that'll be coming up towards the beginning of the year.
Was that the one that was passed last year?
It was a temporary one, so.
It was temporary.
Yeah, so we're preparing an ordinance in case city council does want to adopt something more permanent and update our zoning code to reflect that.
Right.
Any questions from the commission on the planning manager's report? That's Vice Chairman.
So, when exactly is the moratorium going to expire? Like February, March, April?
I believe it was March 26.
Yeah, March 26.
So the planning commission would need to vote on it sometime in February, so the council could vote on it by March, right?
Yes.
Or actually, if the council would need to vote on it twice because it's an ordinance.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've got the schedule lined out depending on which way we want to go with it. So we'll be meeting with, I'm meeting with, I'm meeting, I'm meeting with Lily probably tomorrow and to go over that schedule. And because we got to have, if, if, if we're doing this ordinance, then we need to have it done before the temporary ordinance expires.
Thank you. Any other questions from the commission? Any public comment on the?
No comment at this time.
Perfect. And then we'll move on to commissioners' report. Is there any commissioners that would like to report on, on anything? All right. And with that, we will move on to our communications. And is there any communications from the commission? Yes, Vice Chairman.
So I just wanted to update people about some events that are going to be happening in the city over the next week or so. Tomorrow, there's going to be the senior food distribution from 10 to 11 a.m. at the Pinole Senior Center. If you're over 55, low income, and a Pinole resident, you can get free groceries there this Tuesday, and I believe also two weeks from this upcoming Tuesday. There's also going to be a special city council meeting tomorrow with one item on the agenda, closed session discussion of appointing an interim city manager. On Wednesday, there's going to be a traffic and pedestrian safety committee meeting at 6 p.m. where they're going to be discussing a map showing maintenance priority zones throughout the city in the order they'll be maintained, and which I think may be of interest to several of our prior commentators. Committee review of a transportation development act to help fund a pedestrian crossing across San Pablo Avenue at Fifth Avenue and for the new senior housing development next to Robla. And a staff report on the completion of sidewalk rehabilitation project R 02402, which reviews curb cuts made to improve accessibility at several locations. On Thursday, the 11th, there's going to be a police toy charity drive, which they're accepting donations for at the Public Safety Building or at the Target at 1400 Fitzgerald for actually loading the command trailer with toys, basically new stuff they're giving to kids at the Oakland Children's Hospital. And on Saturday the 13th, there's going to be the holiday breakfast from 9 a.m. to 11 a.m. in person at the Pinole Senior Center, which you do need to sign up for. There's a limited number of slots, I think about 230 or so, and I think there are about 150 open as of this morning. And there is a fee associated, tickets $10 for residents, $12 for non-residents. So, and happy holidays.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Any other communications? No. Only thing I did wanted to note is that I also attended the tree lighting that was this past weekend. It was a really good event. I did talk to some of the business owners, and they said that whenever the city does those types of events, that the businesses do pretty well. So it might be, you know, something to also consider when we're talking about like the parklets, that if there's other events like the car show where the street gets shut down, that might be too well, that might go well for businesses. And no other communications? And any public comment?
No public comment.
All right. And with that, our next planning commission meeting is scheduled for January 12, 2026 at 7 p.m. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.